At 6:00 PM, July 26, and I'd like to open the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce this meeting is being televised live on local cable, Channel 18. If we could all rise and say, "Pledge of Allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the next thing.
Public comment.
Does anyone have any public comment? I'd like to hold all public comments to the end, so I'll make the following statement. Does anyone have any public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann. You can have three minutes to have to make your comments. That will be yet, again, as you stated. That's only in reference to non-items related to this agenda, as you know, okay? I will ask for public comment at the each, at the end of each public hearing and at the end of each public hearing presentation, and so I will go to the public and ask for any present, any public comment at that time. Tonight, we're going to have, so, at this point, the four regular members. Thank you for coming onboard, Sharon, along with Charlie, who is an associate, but will be, well, will be sitting tonight, so it'll be the five members.
We should actually recognize Sharon as.
Yeah, I was, prior to this meeting, I said, "Sharon, great job." I've got a couple of phone calls from people who were in the audience and sitting on that board and said, "You did an unbelievable job presenting yourself."
So Sharon is now a full board member.
Yeah, after six years of trudery and pain and anguish.
Well done, Sharon.
Yeah, I'm sure you'll do great for the position. Thank you very much. Okay, so that being said, Charlie, would you like to read the first?
Yes, happy to run.
Continue.
Okay, continued hearings, 90 Pappanestet Island Road. Owner Brendan B. P. Giblin requests a special permit under Section 174-17.1 and Section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure with associated pool, detached garage, with guest suite above on property located in an R3 zoning district, excuse me, map 106, parcel 34, Mashpee, Mass. Parenthesis, continued from May 24, 2023 hearings at the request of the board to make a determination on July 26, 2023, to either extend the hearing or accept a withdrawal if there is nothing in writing submitted to the Conservation Department from DEP.
Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant. I saw the conservation comments, you know, there's been nothing, other than the initial appeal, as the board knows, this was, I don't even know if I want to use the word "denied", but denied by the Conservation Commission, and has been appealed to DEP. It is currently under a MIPA review, so my understanding from the consulting engineer, Mark Dibb with Cape and Islands, that there is a, there will be a site visit in August. The MIPA review is probably be concluded at the end of August, and then, according to him, it's probably going to be another 30 days before DEP issues any decision. So, we can either, I can ask for a continuance till October, or I can withdraw without prejudice and bring it back when it's ready. So it's whatever the board's pleasure is at this stage.
As Chair, I'd like you to withdraw.
Okay, that's fine.
I think we, at the last meeting, we made that determination as a board.
I agree with that.
I think you should withdraw.
Okay, then, Mr. Chairman, at the request of the board, I would ask for a motion to withdraw without prejudice. So, without prejudice.
Someone would like to make that motion, please? Charlie?
One second.
If I may just say one thing, Charlie, do we need to read into the record any of these public comments or anything? There were also public conservation.
I think we're going to be starting from scratch when we begin, right?
I think you're right, Charlie.
Before we do that, should we ask for a public comment?
Yeah, that's true. Anybody in the audience have any public comment on this application? Although they're withdrawing, so it really wouldn't matter whatever.
I don't.
All right, Charlie, I'm sorry?
Okay, let me get.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Charlie?
We don't.
All right. Make a motion relative to 90 Pappanestet Island Road. Owner Brendan B. Gitlin requests a special permit under 174-17.1, 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing non-conforming structure and replace it with a new single-family residential structure with associated pool, detached garage, with guest suite above on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 106, parcel 34, Mashpee, Mass. The applicant has made a motion to withdraw without prejudice, which is before us for our determination and vote.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a document we need to sign in reference to that? So, do we all date it?
Yes.
Okay. So, Chris will have to sign that? The applicant needs to sign it. Let's see. Charlie, would you read the next continued hearing?
Yes, run. Second on the list of continued hearings, numbers 12 and 16, Pappanestet Island Road. Owners, the Pappanestet Island Road LLC and Jonathan Bernstein, trustee of 16 Pappanestet Island Road Realty Trust, request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise two existing dwellings and construct one new conforming dwelling on the combined lots on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 265, map 105, parcel 266, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from June 14, 2023 hearings at the request of the board and attorney, and we have a letter from Attorney Michael Ford.
Would you like to also read that?
I will. Thank you, sir. Date of July 19, 2023, Town of Mashpee, Zoning Board of Appeals, 16 Reed Knuck Road North, Mashpee. Relative to Zoning Board of Appeals, request for continuance, 12 and 16, Pappanestet Island Road. Dear Members of the Board, this office represents the Pappanestet Island Road LLC and Jonathan Bernstein, trustee, 16 Pappanestet Island Road Realty Trust, with request to the application for a special permit for properties located at 12 and 16, Pappanestet Island Road, Mashpee, Mass. The applicant respectfully requests a continuance of the public hearing scheduled for your July 26, 2023. This request is being made as the applicant is working with their design team to make revisions to the site plan and is also awaiting the anticipated legal guidance the board has requested from Town Council. The applicant would request that the matter be continued until your August 23, 2023 meeting agenda. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Very truly, Michael D. Ford Esquire.
I would like to give a report to the board and a conversation I had with Town Council. I think it's important that you consider this application. I had a conversation with Town Council, and he stated he wanted to have, in written form, the applicant's desires and his goals. That was done, correct? And at that point in time, there's some interaction between applicant and Town Council. And so now, the applicant is in the process of doing some work to answer those questions. I did not interact with applicant in any way, shape, or form. There wasn't interaction. There was, in my belief, an interaction between Town Council and the applicant's attorney. So at this point, anybody on the board have any questions? And I'll go to the audience, and then we'll vote on that, that letter.
I have none.
I have also, Town Council wants to talk to David.
Yes, and, and David, as we know, when he's back on Friday? So, when he's back on Friday. I saw that request, but he does, yes, that is.
Just one question. Do we know the proposed size of the proposed new dwelling?
I'm not aware that we know that. I think they're in the middle of redesign, and we've not, we've not been told that. We don't know if it's going down.
There's a revised plan coming.
There is, as depicted to the, the correspondence we've received, there is a new plan coming. Now, whether that's going to be a reduction in size, I don't.
It's going to be Friday, one meeting.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, so.
And relative to the, the letter from Town Council, I think we also, we should just await the next hearing date to get into that, to the extent we need to.
Yeah, okay. Anybody in the audience have any? I'm sorry, Chair.
We're definitely, we'll have time to look at the size of this plan.
Yeah, no, I fully anticipate it. I mean, this one, we, we have to pay very close attention.
It's all that upland.
There's a lot of dynamics.
They have to figure what part, they can sit in the square footage.
Yeah, and, yeah, there's a lot of dynamic in this application.
That's the huge portion. Does, the house size of the house is definitely relevant, too.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody in the audience have any input in reference to the application? Yes, ma'am. Please come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and feel free to speak.
Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. I have to say, I came here tonight horrified at both of these applications, because I actually looked them up on the satellite map. And the last thing this town needs is another $12 million estate on Pappanestet Island Road. So I'm pleased that they're being continued, and I'm hoping that maybe you can continue them for another 50 or 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a letter from, from, from the council?
We have a letter from Ford and Ford that I have read.
Certainly.
So I guess our, our vote would be moved to accept the request of council.
Exactly.
To continue the hearing until August 23, 23, anticipating receipt of additional information.
If I can just ask a question, Mary Ann, do you have space in the agenda for that night?
Yes.
Oh, you had to close public comment.
Don't, we don't want to close public comment.
Oh, we don't?
No, we don't want to do that.
No, then they can't talk to you.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor by Charlie. I have a second by Jonathan. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Let's see, one second. Charlie, would you like to read the next extended?
Certainly.
Hearing, continue.
Next on the agenda of continued hearings is 164 Captain's Row. Owners, Mark L. and Robin R. Galante, request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition, alteration, extension to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 28, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from July 12, 2023 hearings at the request of the attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant, Mark and Robin Galante. We are seeking a written finding under 174-17 for a modest addition to this property of 512 square feet. This was originally brought to the board as a bigger addition that was going to be out in this area as well, but they have reduced the size of the addition, so you see a new plan. There were two housekeeping matters because of Board of Health comments, so when they reduced the size of the addition, the, the original addition required a relocation or, of the septic system. The new addition does not require that. However, the note stayed on the plan that said relocation. So we amended the plan to take off that note, because again, there's no relocation necessary. I did have communication with the Board of Health. I think Mary Ann has the emails from him, and his condition at that stage is that it does require us an inspection, but it does not require any permit approval, because there's no relocation being done. So, as I said, we've had the plan reflect that. The other housekeeping matter, what I've highlighted in yellow was an existing bedroom. That bedroom was originally going to be relocated into the new addition, however, with the reduction in the size of the addition, that bedroom is going to stay. Unfortunately, the plan says former bedroom, but it is going to remain. So, again, I reached out to Zach, because he had mentioned, "There's two bedrooms, and it's a three-bedroom house." Well, we're keeping it at three bedrooms, so we're not increasing any bedrooms. We just want to make sure that the board knows that that bedroom is to remain. Zach just stated that when you get the final plans, just remove that notation that says former bedroom.
So are the plans that are in front of this board correct right now or not?
The design plans are not correct, because that, that little note that says former bedroom shouldn't be there.
Right here, with the washer and dryers.
Well, what's going to happen?
Sign that off.
It can certainly be a, I mean, it's an interior design issue. It's not a zoning issue.
Yeah, albeit the discretion of the board.
I understand.
How they want to pursue that.
I understand that. But again, as I said, it's, that's, the point, the site plan is correct. That notation should be removed before a building permit can issue.
Well, also, is there not an amendment that has to, there's something in reference to, although you've got it in written form from the Board of Health agent?
Yes.
That is clarifying what you just said. Do we have that in writing?
Yes, you should have that in writing.
Is that correct, Mary Ann?
Well, I'm sorry, maybe I missed it. Why is that an issue? Because it says former bedroom? You eliminate bedrooms all the time, don't you?
No, I know, but that, the bedroom isn't actually being eliminated.
He's keeping it.
It's staying.
Well, it's being converted to a laundry pantry.
No, 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 they're going to move, they're going to keep the laundry down. The laundry is currently in the basement. Yeah, so what, what if happened, if they had kept the larger addition, that bedroom would have been moved to the addition, and then the laundry would have been brought upstairs. Now it's remaining a bedroom, the laundry's staying in the basement.
Okay.
Chris, the only thing that, that I have from the Board of Health says, "Permit is needed for septic tank and distribution box replacement. Leaching is approved for three bedrooms per 2005 septic repair permit, and new plans show only two bedrooms."
Yeah, there was conversations that I've had within the last couple of days that I have here that I've highlighted.
All right, good.
What does Board of Health say?
It's a three-bedroom.
The Board of Health says two, but it's actually three.
But.
Right, but the septic's size for three.
Yeah.
Scott, from the living room to the existing family room.
If, you got it?
So that's, that a four-foot opening?
Yeah, it should be six foot, but Zach's been.
And it has a bathroom in it, too.
Bathroom, isn't it?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we read, if I may? Have you, are you done, Counselor?
No, unless you want me to go into the actual merits of the project.
That's up to the board.
Okay, but if you want to read the Board of Health first.
Why don't you finish your presentation?
Okay, so again, what we're looking at is a modest addition. The, the lot, the structure itself is non-conforming in three areas. The lot is wholly within flood zone, so we are not conforming as to lot coverage at 100%. We are not conforming to setback to wetlands at zero, and also, the northern boundary side is non-conforming at 12.9 feet. The addition itself will be completely conforming to current zoning, so it, the yellow highlighted, it meets your side yard setback, it meets your front yard setback, so we're not creating any new non-conformities, we're not intensifying any existing non-conformities other than lot coverage. So the structure coverage goes from 14.9 to 18.1%, which is under your 20, 20 or 25%. However you look at it now, considering the lot is zero.
Well, the lot's 100%.
Right.
What's the size of the lot?
The actual size of the lot is 15,520 square feet.
So it'd be 20%.
Right, yeah, so we're on, yeah, so we're at 18 point, 18.1% as proposed.
Board, have any question? What I'd like to do is have some of these agencies run into the record, so that we can understand from Board of Health, what it is.
Yeah, my only concern right now is Board of Health isn't commenting on that four-four case opening.
Yeah, that's my concern, too.
When Glenn was here, it was always six-four case opening. Zach has changed things a little bit. He doesn't do the rodent inspection anymore. Well, I don't know about the rodent, he doesn't do the asbestos inspection anymore. We need some clarification from Zach, from Board of Health, if he's allowing four-four case openings between rooms, because otherwise, when Glenn was here.
That's what you're saying, a bedroom, right?
When Glenn was here, that'd be a, he wouldn't allow it.
Which, which is that?
So how do you want to pursue that?
From the existing living room to the family room.
Family room to living room, the opening is.
Seen a four-foot opening?
Right side. Right there.
Seen the four-four case opening?
Right there.
Glenn always wanted a six-foot opening. Now, I've seen Zach in, in the last year or two, in situations where he couldn't get in a six-foot opening, he allowed a smaller opening. It looks like there's plenty of room there for a six-foot opening, but if he's not requiring, we can't require it as a zoning board.
Right, I mean.
We need some clarification from him.
Yeah, I mean, Zach has reviewed this plan, and he said, "Two bedrooms." So he's certainly not counting those rooms as bedrooms.
If that's how he's.
I think for this application, we have to go with what we've got in front of us, right? Because he's reviewed the plan and hasn't brought it up.
Yeah.
But I, I see your point.
I'd like some clarification for future.
So we have a member, so we have a question from, from the board that needs to go to the Board of Health that they asked. We need to understand.
Is that something you can do? Get clarification on that?
If not, I will do it.
What, what he wants for, what's his definition of a clear, of a bedroom?
And you can point out the situation between the family room, all right, the existing family room and the existing living room on A1, Plan A1, that's for this application.
And if his new role is four-foot is okay, then?
Yes.
Because this architect has done a lot of work in his town for a long time. He knows, and maybe he's had the conversation already, and he's, Zach's okay with a four-foot opening.
Yeah, well, we need to understand.
That might have just missed it.
Well, he could.
That's possible, too. That's why we need the conversation.
So I can't see Steve missing this.
Maybe we should condition this on Zach giving us.
Clarification on this opening.
I'm open-minded to any conditions you'd like to put forward.
There's plenty of room there to make that a four or six. I don't know.
I agree, I agree 100%.
Yeah, and I don't want to.
But they're looking for probably wall spaces, but I give you a point 100%.
I'm looking at that wall space, you're not getting enough, and maybe you'll go.
So you can condition it on.
I don't make the motion, but more than happy to do so, meaning I recommend that.
He's not making the motions anymore.
He's looking at me.
Charlie, so Charlie, you can condition this on approval of the current, of the proposed opening.
Between.
Between existing living room and existing family room.
Yeah, I see why you did that, naturally. I saw, I know, I understand why you, why you looked at me.
Let me get the proposed motion.
Of course I have it.
So Charlie, so that's one condition. The second condition is, is we have to get a new set of plans, right? That new set of plans.
Should be.
Prior to, if, if you, if this.
So they can sign off.
Yeah, if this board wants to move forward and improve, or at least move forward with this application, there has to be a new plan submitted prior to the issuance of a building permit or the application of a building permit, and signed off by me for the board, and that plan has to clearly depict the bedroom statement that is, that's going to be stricken.
And there was another issue.
No, that's already been resolved.
That's not a problem with the zoning.
That was on the site plan, that's been resolved.
Yeah, so the bedroom that states it's, what?
Former bedroom.
Former bedroom's going to be now stated as bedroom.
Third.
Existing bedroom.
There's third bedroom.
Yes, it's an existing bedroom.
Former, former will be removed, and it'll just say bedroom or existing bedroom.
Yes, correct.
That plan will have to be submitted to Mary Ann, I will sign off on it.
Right.
And then an application will be made, if in fact this board chooses to move forward.
And I think that's consistent, consistent with the email that I received from Zach today.
Well, I want to see some of these emails. That'll be the next thing after I get comments from this board. I'm going to go into reading into the record the comments from various boards and committees.
Excuse me, but wouldn't you know if the six-foot opening changed to four feet? Wouldn't you guys know?
It hasn't, it hasn't.
I haven't, I don't know that yet. No, I don't know.
It must be because it was pre-existing that Steve Cook didn't change it.
Do some towns have different thinking?
It was pre-existing, that's why Steve Cook didn't change it.
Maybe, I don't know if that case opening was pre-existing.
According to Steve Cook, it was pre-existing.
Oh, maybe because it's pre-existing.
Yeah, but he.
Yeah, but you're not adding a bedroom.
I'm not.
They're not, they're not adding a bedroom, so if it's pre-existing, there's not much that can do about it.
What was the, what was the initial condition? The initial condition that you proposed?
There's, anything over on that side of the house is exactly as it sits today, so there's been, there's no change. Steve Cook did not make any changes to what's existing.
That could be why he didn't comment, because it's existing, non-conforming.
Yeah, but he's still looking at bedroom comment. He still would have raised that.
Right.
He still would have raised it. I think we need to get a clarification. I think we did the right thing there.
Absolutely, so we need a clarification on the six-foot opening.
I have heard that he's allowing smaller openings. I just don't know what that number is.
Okay.
So Charlie, the second thing was the bedroom. The first thing, what was the first thing you wanted to include in the motion?
Six-foot opening, that's what he said.
A clarification from Zach that.
Yeah, that the opening doesn't need to be six feet, between.
Correct.
The living room and the family room.
So it's just.
In writing from Zach. So clarification on the six-foot opening, however it is.
In writing from the Board of Health stating that it can remain as depicted on the plan, or it needs to be amended to be six feet.
Okay.
Because right now, it's depicted as four feet.
But Zach might require six feet, but this is existing, so he might not make them change, because they're not adding a bedroom.
We'll get that.
If they're adding a bedroom, then I think it'd be an issue, but they're not adding a bedroom.
Right, we're not adding any bedrooms. There's three bedrooms in the house, the septic is sized for three, and we're keeping it three.
So what I'd like to do is, can we read into the record, please, any comments from various boards, committees?
All right, Conservation, moving on, Captain's Row, 164 Captain's Row, AOC permit for addition to existing dwelling approved by Conservation Commission. Again, Conservation, this project has issued an order of conditions from Conservation.
The only other one's reported.
Yeah, if they're, they aren't doing the tank in D Box, then a Teta 5 inspection will be needed.
Who's that from?
Zach.
Yeah, so can you also, can you pass that down? You can read that in the record, please?
Yes, the septic is for three bedroom, oh, this is from Zach Seaberry, dated July 26, 2023, at 3:30 today, to Chris Corain and Mary Ann Romero. Yes, the septic is for three bedroom. I would have that corrected on the final plans if it was going to remain a bedroom and not a former bedroom. This way, in the future, if they do renovations, there isn't any confusion on what that bedroom, what the bedrooms are there. Thank you, Zach Seaberry, Health Agent.
Can you make specific reference to that, Charlie, please, when you read the motion, including or not, you know? Using the motion form at the bottom, it says contingent upon agency's comments read in the record. I usually say, "Including but not limited to the Board of Health," that raises our eyes, and we look at that motion. We know that there was a Board of Health comment. That was very important.
Zach made a good point about that.
Yeah.
A very good point.
Yeah.
Because if they want to add a bedroom down the road, look at only the two bedrooms.
All right, so that being said, any letters from the butters?
No.
Okay, Mr. Morris is not here. Audience input. Anybody in the audience? Yes, ma'am, come on up to the microphone and speak, please, and just give us your name and loc, and your address, please. Hi.
Good evening. Thank you.
I'm the trustee for 170 Captain's Row. And I just had a couple of questions. That's okay.
Sure, if you can just voice the questions to us, please.
Sure. Um, I looked at these plans earlier and I was a little bit confused on what was what. For example, the, the bedroom that he was talking about that was going to have the washer and dryer and now it's being back to a bedroom. And I didn't quite understand what was in the new addition. Um, but one of my concerns is, we're on the side of their house where they have the living room and then that other family room. And then there's like a big fireplace. Um, their generator and all of their air conditioning equipment is there. They did get a variance for that, so I can pretty much reach out and, they're close, the compressors.
If I may, if I may just ask, you said they did get a variance from that, for, for that?
When they built that living room slash family room.
And how long ago roughly was that?
Eh, I think it might have been when their parents owned the house, so I'm not exactly sure.
Years ago, possibly.
Probably, yes. I believe. Um, but my question is, is since they're adding this other section now, um, like, for example, I have the house that I live in, not here. I have two zones of air conditioning, you know, because it's bigger. I'm wondering, are they going to be doing a new air conditioning system where there might be another compressor? You know, right there, close to our lot line again? Or if it's just going to be, you know, a bigger air conditioning system?
That we wouldn't know.
Counselor, could you turn your page back to show?
As a builder, if I was putting an addition on that side of the house, I would not put down a raise the compressor on the other end of the house.
I just, I'm just concerned.
Because most likely the furnace that's going to do the heating and cooling for that would be in this area of the addition, I'm sorry, in this area of the addition. Doesn't make sense to put the compressor down the other end of the house. But I'm not the builder.
Well, for example, I have a two-zone and mine are on the garage side of my house and they're both there even though the other one's, you know, way down.
So current member on counsel, the side of the house that she is abutting is the opposite side of the additions building. So, but we do recognize your concern of additional ancillary things being added to the home.
I'm, I'm just wondering, are they going to be putting in a bigger air conditioning system? Or is it going to use the existing one?
My concern is as follows, though. I don't believe that there is a zoning per se issue if they choose to put a air conditioner there. It's always nice to have good neighbors, though. I would hope that that doesn't happen.
Well, the compressor is there now.
Yeah, what I'm saying, you're, you're worried they're going to add another one or a bigger one. I'm hoping that doesn't take place. I'm not so sure this board has a right to get, to condition or change it.
They could be adding one to that system and not adding another compressor.
Right, that's what I was hoping.
And there's no zoning requirement in the town of Mashpee that I'm aware of that says a compressor has to be a certain distance from the lot.
Right, no, and I understand that.
So that's, so this.
I was just wondering if Chris knew if they were going to be doing a bigger system or whatever.
We wouldn't know.
And then. Okay, so, and my other question was, that side of the addition, the 512 square feet, it's going to be, so that bedroom, the existing one that says washer and dryer, I looked at these plans earlier today, that's going to go back to an original bedroom? The existing bedroom? But what's going to be on the side there? It's like storage and, and another fam, another family room?
It has a six-foot opening. It can't be a bedroom because there's no windows.
I'm sorry, Chris.
No, that's okay. So yes, new family room, new storage, new mudroom. Those are the three things.
Okay, family room, storage.
They can't make that a bedroom legally because there's no windows.
And that's the 512 square feet?
Yeah, the dark, if you look.
This side over here.
The lines are folded.
Right.
So that's the issue.
Okay, and that's on the opposite side?
That is correct.
Okay.
It does have, that's got the six-foot opening.
Chris, could you, could you do me, could you just reach out to your clients and just say that there was a concern raised in reference to the condenser? We cannot make anybody do anything in reference to that issue. Make a recommendation to them that good neighbors are, are a good thing.
Well, when this had.
You know what I mean?
When this had come up previously, um, when they were going to be doing a different property, I, I guess they were thinking at one point of doing up and downstairs in a larger home. Um, I had discussed it with the owners, saying, you know, um, would you be open to maybe moving them to the other side of the house, you know, depending or whatever? And they said that that would be really difficult because I think they said their gas line comes in there and they're electric or whatever, so. And I get that. Um, I just thought since we were all here and Christmas here, that maybe.
We can only, I asked counsel to, to state that to his client. If his client says, we won't, there's nothing very much, there's nothing really that the board can do.
Well, thank you for your time.
Let's see if we can help you with that.
Thanks for your time.
I hope all your questions were answered.
Yes, they were.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, guys and ladies. So audience, any, any other board questions?
I have none.
Okay, motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
Did I get a first and a second?
First.
Oh, okay, all as a favor. Aye. Okay. Do you have a, you have clarity in reference to a motion?
More or less, yeah.
Okay, so Charlie, would you like to make a motion, please?
I would, to make a motion relative to 164 Captain's Row. Owners Mark L. and Robin R. Galante request a written finding under 17417 and 17433 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition, alteration, extension to a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 96, parcel 28 Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass. General laws 40A, Section 6. Two, proposed site plan, prepared for Mr. and Mrs. Mark Galante, 164 Captain's Row, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by J. E. Landers slash Colley, P.E., date 07/13/23. Scale 1 inch equals 10 feet. Drawn by S.A.P., sheet 1 of 1, stamped and signed by J. E. Landers slash Colley, Civil number 35101, registered professional engineer. New addition plan, Galante Residence, 164 Captain's Row, Mashpee, Mass. Scale 1/4 inch equals 1 foot, date 7/8/2023. Drawing number A1, first floor plan, A2, front elevation, right elevation and rear elevation. Prepared by Katuit Bay Design LLC. Four, conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, particularly the, and specifically the comment of the Board of Health in an email, a comment of 7/26/23 that was read into the record. Five, the board finds that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure are used to the neighborhood. Six, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number seven, also conditioned on clarification relative to the six-foot opening shown on the plan by the Board of Health. And number eight.
Excuse me, it's a four-foot.
Four-foot opening.
A four, I'm sorry, I'm, yep, thank you.
It may have to be a six-foot opening, but it is shown on the plan.
Stand corrected. Number eight, conditioned on receipt and review of new plans prior to the building permit being issued. Signed, reviewed and signed by Ron Bovee, uh, the Chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals, which clearly depict the existing bedroom as a bedroom. I think that takes care of it. And that's.
Well, what's noted as a former bedroom?
What's noted as?
It's noted as, the plan showed it noted as a former bedroom, it has to be changed to.
To bedroom.
To an existing bedroom.
All right, let me, let me strike number eight. Condition on receipt and review of new plans prior to the issuance of the building permit, reviewed and signed by, by Ron Bovee, Chairperson of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, noting clearly, excuse me. Clearly depicting the existing bedroom as the third bedroom.
That's one.
Easy as.
We have a motion in the floor to have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor.
Sorry about that confusion, folks.
It's all right, Charlie.
Doing great.
You got it figured out.
Yeah, doing great. Okay, next on the agenda is the new hearings.
We got a sign.
Oh, we're not ready. Thank you. Sign number one. There you go.
Okay, Charlie?
Yep. Uh, next, under, uh, titled new hearings. 363 Monomoskoy Road. Petitioner, Dear Realty Trust, Janice Kopp Burns trustee, requests an appeal of the Building Commissioner's decision under Mass. General laws, Chapter 40A, Sections 8 and 15. Petitioner disputes the Building Commissioner's determination that the lot has merged with Seven Cricket Way and is entitled to a building permit on the basis that the lot is grandfathered under the zoning bylaw 17421A and Mass. General laws, Chapter 40A, Section 6.
Good evening.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, again for the record, Attorney Christopher Corrine, representing the Dear Realty Trust, uh, owners of property at 363 Monomoskoy Road. Uh, with me tonight are Earl Burns and Janice Burns, who are, uh, the owners through the trust of 363 Monomoskoy Road. Um, this is a situation where I had requested a determination from the, the building inspector or Building Commissioner that 363 Monomoskoy Road was a protected lot under, uh, your bylaw and under 40A, Section 6. As the board knows, uh, non-conforming lots, uh, are protected from, uh, dimensional increases and dimensional requirements, uh, setbacks with, um, lot area, uh, as so long as they remain in separate ownership as of the bylaw change. In this particular case, the bylaw changed in 1985, or 1988, when we added the flood zone requirement. So this lot, um, has lot area of 6,800 and, um, would have been a buildable lot at that time, or it would have been a protected lot. But in 1988, the bylaw changed to say, state that, uh, you had to include flood zone to determine lot, lot area. So it became non-conforming at that time. I had submitted information to the Building Commissioner that at that time, the lot was in separate ownership and has continued to be in separate ownership. I don't know what facts the Building Commissioner relies on, but he has made a determination that this lot is not in separate ownership and is in fact in common ownership with the property at Seven Cricket Way, which is owned by Deana Burns and Earl Burns, Jr. I, I don't know, again, I don't know what his determination was. There is a family dynamic. Earl, Deana is Earl's mother. But Seven Cricket Way is owned by Earl and Deana. Earl and Deana are the only people who can do anything with Seven Cricket Way. They control it. The Dear Realty Trust was set up by Earl. He was the original trustee, his wife was the trustee. Deana Burns at no time had anything to do with that. Trust had nothing to do with that property. So she has no control over what that trust does with that property versus the other property, which she does have control on. And that's what the common ownership really comes down to is control. And there's no control by Deana Burns. So Earl could have done what he wanted with 363 Monomoskoy Road, independent of Deana, but he cannot do anything with, with Seven Cricket, independent of Deana. And that's really what the comment, the control issue is. Um, I disagree with the Building Commissioner's, uh, determination. And quite frankly, I don't think that his, uh, his determination would uphold in a, in a court of law.
So I read every page of your presentation. I spent three or four hours. I then went down, had a conversation with Mary Ann. Same time or shortly thereafter, the town planner came in after. Mary Ann knew my opinion and the town, um, planning board director, Evan, came up with the same opinion that I came up with. And they were, he was not told my opinion. Here's my thing. I, I once had a trust in my life and my mother was the trustee. And I controlled that trust, although I wasn't an owner of the trust, I wasn't a beneficiary. My mother did what I asked her to do in reference to the trust. That's my point. Ownership is defined, is one of the definitions of ownership, as you know, Counsel, and you clearly stated, is control.
Correct.
Different than, you know, taxes, there's so many other things, you know? We put things in trust for reasons, right? Even though sometimes we had, they are arms-length transactions, right? We all know that.
Correct.
Long and short of it, um, in reading the whole document, I don't see anything case law-wise that you put forward that doesn't, that proves that this situation is not a controlled issue, meaning there is nothing in your case law presented in your dissertation that is on point, specific on control of one entity to another, meaning two people to a trust or trust. I see nothing there, and there probably isn't anything in case law. This could be, I don't, could be a new world, I don't know. But for me, I don't see anything, for me, the burden of proof is on you. I don't see anything that changes the decision of the zoning enforcement officer of this town, nor did Evan.
I'm surprised at that because, again, the case law that is, goes on generally is dealt with husband and wife. So a husband and wife owns a property individually and then they set up a trust to the adjacent property, which they're the trustee of. The courts have always come down to say, that's common control. This case, we don't have that. This isn't a husband and wife situation. Deana Burns has nothing to do with this trust and I don't understand.
Where does that stop? Husband and wife, boyfriend, girlfriend, so, it, it, where does, where does control, where does that word control start and stop? For me, it started, it did not, I had a certain amount of control of my mother. It's not husband and wife, it's my, it's my mother.
That's not the way the courts would look at it.
Well, I can only tell you that control, I think, is a, you know as well as I do, grandfathering is substantially changed over the last 20 years in the court system. Specifically, you know, check aborting, change. Can't check abort anymore, illegal, right? I did that for years, I check aborted, can't do it anymore. And so they're taking that from you, me, you, me, that's check aborting, to it's going to be somebody way arms-length transaction, to somebody you don't even know when you do, aren't you, me, you, me, right?
Right.
So my point is this, and I, and I know considerable amount about grandfathering, I just do not believe at this point in time, I don't see any case law in this document that you presented that says, hey, a judge found in reference to this scenario that, you know what, it is not emergent. I don't see that.
But I guess my question is, how are you making the determination that it is common control? What is, what's the factual basis that you're making it common control?
So here's my question.
You're speculating that Deana somehow has some control over this trust.
So who's the trustee?
Right now, it's Janice Burns. Before that, it was Earl Burns.
So at the point, let's go before.
Yep.
So Earl Burns was the trustee.
Junior, correct, he was the trustee.
Earl Burns is one of the owners, along with Deana.
Of the Seven Cricket, that is correct.
So my question to you is, is follows, and I probably know the answer, but I, I have a different probably opinion. So do you believe that Deana and Earl do have no control over Earl?
Yes, that is absolutely true. She has no control over that trust.
I don't, I don't buy that.
She's not a beneficiary, she's not the settler, she didn't create it. That's, that, that's, you're just speculating that somehow, because of the family dynamics, you have.
The burden of proof is on you to prove to the zoning enforcement officer there wasn't a merge. So you've got to prove unequivocally that there's no control doing this.
No, I can have, I can have Earl come up here and tell you that his mother had no interest in that trust or in that property.
Who's the beneficiary?
Janice, the, the wife. Who's also the trustee.
Okay.
So if I go to court.
Who's the beneficiary before?
It's always been Janice.
Okay, so when the trustee changed, the beneficiary didn't change.
That is correct.
I still believe, nothing you've said so far has changed my opinion.
All right, well, if I go, I mean, I, I think if this was taken before a judge, it would come out the other way. I mean, I just, I disagree. I think maybe you should, maybe this should be reviewed by town council.
Why don't we, why don't we read them in?
Name, I guess. Here's, here's my point in the whole conversation.
Right.
I can't bring everything to town council, I've already been told. So, I mean, I, I don't know where I go with that, and this is my opinion. And it's a planning director's opinion and the zoning enforcement. So at this point.
I can do one thing. There is one case that I think may be helpful, that I can provide to this board and ask for it continues to August 9th and see if that may.
Counsel, I'm more than really willing to ask this board to extend if in fact you think you've got some case law that may change our.
Would a, let me ask you this. Would an affidavit from the attorney who created the trust be helpful?
Not so sure that would be helpful. But if you have a case law, if you have case law that's very much on point, I'm listening.
Okay, I, I think I have a case that may be close, yes.
And you certainly should send them to David-
Yes.
And to the town planner.
I will.
Who both agree with Ron.
I didn't see the letter from, I didn't see the letter from Evan.
And we have different opinion. Now, we were in different, we didn't coerce. We didn't talk to each other. I said to Mary Ann, here's my opinion. And we came up with the same reason.
Yeah.
The same exact reason.
I mean, we're, unfortunately, I'm asking you to make a legal determination and, you know, you're, no one-
I'm not a lawyer.
You're not a lawyer, Tom Planner's not a lawyer. I haven't seen, did Tom Planner write something? I didn't see anything from him.
We will read that into the record. If you'd like to read it.
We're going to read it into the record. So you presented- We're just going around-
No, I understand. I would disagree and I don't know that I'll be able to convince you.
So why don't we move that in the record? So you'll understand what's going on. We'll get comments from the board and I'll ask the audience to have the comment. If you choose to extend, we certainly would take that under advisement.
Okay.
All right? So why don't we read that in the record? Is that good?
I, I have a question. Could I ask a question, Chris? There's no question if there's separate ownership.
Correct.
Okay. So the issue is, if there's separate ownership, does one owner have the right and the, the right to control the other in terms of what's going to happen with these lives?
That is, that is correct. The courts have come down and basically, they look at control, not the form of ownership.
Not to know whether Ron is, is correct or incorrect. He said that you have, your petitioners have the burden of showing that they did not have control. Or that they did have control, whatever it is.
There's no common control, is my word.
That you have the burden of proving or disproving. Is it your position that the town, the town of Mashpee, the zoning board of appeals, if no proof was given whatsoever from either side and we just had the two deeds, that you would be successful? Simply because of, of the name, the family, the relationship?
No, I think you would have to look at the control issue. I don't think that the face of the documents in of themselves are enough. But again, that's why I've given you, what I believe I've given you sufficient information to show who the trustee is, who the beneficiary is, who created the trust. And also stating that Deana had no control over that trust. So what, what the board's doing, and I think what the commissioner's doing, is speculating, saying, well, I think because it's his mother, she can tell him what to do.
I understand.
And I think that's an assumption.
I'm saying it's an arms length transaction.
Yeah.
It's an arms length transaction. It would be very similar to check aborting. Arms length transaction denied. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't-
Well, again, because, you know, usually when we see these cases, it, it's done, you know, husband and wife are trustees and individuals. That, that doesn't fly.
Does that answer your question, Joe?
It does. And frankly, it doesn't leave me any closer to determining what I would or should do in the situation.
That's why I'm hoping he comes up with something on point.
Yeah, if you do.
I can do that.
Anybody else on this board have any questions? Okay, anybody in the audience have any questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to share.
Come right up.
Yes, come on up. Tell us your name and your address, please, or your home address.
Sure, Chris Van Beek, fifty-seven Monomaskoy. Just regarding ownership and control. I purchased the property about twelve years ago. Inquired about all the ownership, talked to Earl myself. In fact, the fence was on my property. Divided the two properties and got a little touchy at times, but he eventually moved the fence. The fence is on both of these properties and Earl had very clearly stated that it was his property, meaning both lots. Similarly, I've parked on the street on the lot side and frequently was told I can't park there because he owned that property as well. So I've had numerous occasions where the actual owner has said he controls it, owns it, everything. So it wasn't two fences, it was one fence that was added. The parking was again on Monomaskoy Road, which is the lot side. And from a maintenance of the property, whether it's mowing, excuse me, other things, it's always the same person doing all of those items. So from a distinction of ownership, as a neighbor, was told it was completely owned and controlled by Earl.
I think that's some important facts. Thank you, sir. Anyone else, you want to, you want to state something or reply to that? I saw, Chris, you were, you want to stay it up?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I was going to say, I'm not, not disputing that Earl at one time, you know, had interest in both properties. He was a trustee of one of the properties and he's an owner of the other property. So that, I don't know that that makes any difference. We're really looking at Deana and what control issues she has. So if, if I were to sell that property to you, Seven Cricket Way, that's owned by Deana and, and Earl, I would have to give you a deed that was signed by Deana and Earl. If I were to sell the property that's, the trust holds, I don't need Deana's signature. I don't need Deana's sign off. And that's why the control issue comes into play.
But my question is this. Could Earl speak to Earl and say, you're going to vote, do the following? Earl is, is the trustee of the trust and he's also in the deed. Earl could speak to Earl and say, hey, I want to do this and do exactly that because he's the trustee of the trust.
Well, he's not anymore, but-
Well, at one point, that's chain of ownership. It doesn't matter as long as he's in the chain.
But you're looking at Earl and I'm looking at Deana.
I'm looking, I'm looking at anyone that could create a merge because of control. Doesn't matter who I look at. I'm looking at Earl on both aspects. And that's what controls, that's what concerns. There's control.
I, I understand what the, what you're looking for. So I would, I would request a continuance.
All right, so, Earl from the board, Earl from the audience, so-
We've got letters.
Okay, yes, letters. Please read those in.
Do you want to do it? Okay, I have one letter here dated May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. It's from David Morris. It is in regard to Seven Cricket Way and three sixty-three Monomaskoy Road determination. It's to Christopher Corain. Dear Attorney Corain, in response to your request for a determination dated May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, I am of the opinion that Seven Cricket Way and three sixty-three Monomaskoy had been held in common ownership at the time of the zoning change and are for zoning purposes merged as one. Further, I am of the opinion that Ernest Burns, Jr., is in control of both lots currently. I believe that in this case, conveyance to family members does not constitute separate ownerships. As far as zoning relief from the board, I am of the opinion that an accessory structure may be proposed and will require relief from the board. If you feel aggrieved by this decision, you may appeal. Sincerely, David Morris, Building Commissioner, Mashpee Building Department. I have another letter from Evan Lyra dated seven twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three. Seven twenty-five, okay. To Mary Ann. I remember this, but would need to evaluate the chain of title again. What I remember is there seems to have been some deliberate conveyance of the parcels between the husband and wife who own these parcels in attempt to keep them under separate ownership. At one point in time, the husband had the title to one property and the wife held the title to the other while living in the same household as tenants entirety. I question that there was truly separate dominions and control over the two properties between the husband and wife prior to the conveying three sixty-three to their son's bequest at the death of the father and thus think that the commissioner's determination is appropriate. I will review in more detail, if possible, prior to tomorrow's hearings. Thanks, Evan.
Could I just ask that be provided a copy of that letter?
Certainly, you, it's public confidence, public information. Do we have any other letters or comments that need to be read into the record? That's it? Do you, Chris, are you asking this board to extend it on?
Yes, I would ask for a continuance to your next meeting on August ninth.
August ninth, do we have availability? Okay.
Thank you.
So Charlie, would you like to make that motion, please? The applicant is asking for a continuance.
Relative to three sixty-three Monomaskoy Road, the applicant is requesting a continuance of this hearing until? August ninth.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Charlie, we are now down to other business. Would you read that next, first other business issue?
We have that. Other business, eighty-one Bluff Avenue. Board to review the revised site and house plans for the proposed deck and vote if it's a minor or major modification.
So counsel, I have a question in this. Do you anticipate submitting or? I mean, you've already submitted this, right?
I've submitted everything that I believe the board needs.
So is the site plan and the building plan now in compliance with any and all revisions?
Yes, they are. So I, and I'll make just double check. So the, the building plans, no, undoubtedly what I've submitted are correct. The board should have received on Friday morning a revised site plan that removed the general notes about lot coverage. So the zoning, there was a discrepancy. For some reason, the general note showed the old lot coverage and the zoning compliance table showed the new lot coverage. So the general note should be removed from the plan that you have.
I believe they are.
Seven twenty-one.
Yes. Yeah, that would have been Friday. So then those are correct. The lot coverage should be shown in the zoning compliance table as, I think, twenty-nine, or twenty-seven point nine. Twenty-nine point seven, I'm sorry.
Can you find it?
I thought I did-
Oh, down the block, down the block.
When I put it, yep.
Yeah, that is the, that is the correct lot cover, structure coverage.
You just-
Structure coverage. Because it's in a flood zone.
So the plan says lot coverage.
That's not good.
You just tripped on yourself a little bit there, counsel.
I know, it says, I mean, that's the way Cape House has been presenting it. It says lot coverage.
Yeah, it should say proposed structure coverage. Because lot coverage is a hundred percent, right?
Correct, and that's shown in the zoning compliance table in their notes.
Well, I would like to move this forth. So listen, I think we need to amend this again, but it needs to say, "structure coverage." Please have the- Can I get a motion that says the following, please? That says that this site plan needs to be amended to state that the proposed and existing structure coverage, so proposed, existing is thirty point one structure coverage and the proposed lot coverage, again, proposed, all right, existing, structure coverage, thirty point one. Existing, proposed, structure coverage, twenty-nine point seven. That's what it needs to read. And then it needs to say, existing lot coverage, one hundred percent, proposed lot coverage, one hundred percent.
Which that it does, that it does.
Okay. So I'd like to hit a motion that states that we will ask for that and obtain that prior to any building permit application. It would seem to me this has gone around the table long enough.
Yeah. Over a six by two foot expansion. I apologize, I know.
Yeah. I hope that didn't happen again.
I hope not either.
Having proposed what you've proposed, let's incorporate-
Okay, so would you like, yes. Do you have that? You want me to say it again?
I would, I guess if I may interject, I would, I think the way the motion should probably be read is that the board accepts the changes as a minor modification with the condition that a new plan be submitted with the structure coverage.
Right. So why don't we make it even clearer that? So the board, the motion being hereby made that this is a minor modification with the following condition, that the site plan will be amended to state the following, okay? That the, that the existing structure coverage is thirty point one and the existing, the proposed structure coverage is twenty-nine point seven or will be twenty-nine point seven and the lot coverage is one hundred percent, which is already shown.
That's already there.
And the proposed lot coverage is one hundred percent.
That's fine.
And prior to the issuance of a building permit or application of building permit, that plan will be presented and received by this board.
Well, you just made-
You just made the motion.
There you go.
So I'll second that motion.
Yes, I've been told I can do that, but I don't.
You just have to do it right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much.
I would just state one last thing. Please don't let that happen again.
I promise you, it will not happen again.
I was seconds away from saying, let's take it another round.
Appreciate it. Have a good night, everybody.
Take care, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 No, you have to.
Why do I have to, what?
You say all in favor.
I'm, I'm doing all this right now. I've got my mind on something else. All those in favor?
Yes, aye.
Who's second?
I did.
Sharon was a little aggressive.
Yes.
I'm trying to move this on.
You guys think, oh, that's good. Yes. All right, so the next thing is discussion regarding the vice chair position.
Why don't we read Scott's?
Yes. That makes sense. All this stuff, I, I don't want to move this stuff forward because it's mixed up.
Okay. What is it?
Charlie's got it.
Charlie, could you read that in, please?
I'd be happy to, thank you. July tenth, two thousand twenty-three, directed to Ron Bovee, Mashpee Zoning Board. Ron, at this time, I'd like to remove myself as vice chairman of the zoning board of appeals. At this time, with my work schedule and the amount of time I'll be away from Mashpee in the October to April months, I don't feel I can fully devote the time needed to lead future zoning meetings. As it is now, excuse me, I find it hard to keep on top of the amount of pre-research that is required to be able to fully lead a zoning meeting in regard to each application. I also feel the amount of time I have to step down on applications that are a conflict could affect future meetings. I have no problem staying on as a zoning member and can objectively vote on upcoming applications given the information that is presented at the time of application. Thank you, Scott. Scott Goldstein.
So thank you, Scott. You know, I get it, totally understand. So do we have any motion to replace Scott?
I'll make a motion to replace Scott with Sharon.
Do we have a second on that?
A second.
All those in favor? Welcome, Sharon.
It'll take a while.